Okay, we call a meeting to order. Start with a pledge and a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today seeking peace and prosperity for the city that we love. We pray in hopes that you give the governing body and city staff proper wisdom that it takes to lead our community. Please, God, use this as tools to best serve you. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Okay. Perpetual of the agenda. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So some comments. Move on to the next item, E. Acquaintance. WAMPO appointment.
Yeah, the proclamation's E.
Honorable Mayor, this is also, WAMPO is an NDO, it's a municipal planning organization of staff since 1950. It's all organizations and they're funded by federal government. I was sitting in as interim WAMPO representative in lieu of the mayor. The mayor is the primary and being the secondary. So at this point, we were considered Hunter Larkin in his current role as mayor will be the primary appointee to the Wichita area municipal planning organization or WAMPO. And as a result of this appointment, he will represent the city's interests during WAMPO monthly board meetings. The purpose of WAMPO is to maintain responsibility, transportation planning in the Wichita metro area, which covers 22 cities and three counties. And they meet every second Tuesday of the month at the Ronald Reagan Building in downtown Wichita. I don't think there's a motion or anything else that needs to be done. This is just simply an appointment, the mayor. And just if there's any questions about WAMPO or its functions, you can feel free to ask at this time.
Well, that's what this is. This would be essentially the council affirming the appointment.
Does that mean we're in motion in a second?
Yeah, you can make a motion in a second to appoint or to affirm his appointment either way. Potato, patato.
I move that motion.
Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Item behalf approval of the consent agenda.
Does anyone have any questions on that consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Item G1. Resil- unfit habitation 101 North Cedar.
Honorable Mayor and governing body. So this is the unfit habitation, unfit habitation 101 North Cedar. So this is going to be a resolution, schedule a public hearing for 101 North Cedar. This is a consideration of it. Quick background, on November 11th, 2020, the coenforcement officer being myself did a preliminary investigation to property located at 101 North Cedar. It was found to be in violation of City Goddard Code under Chapter 4, Article 7 for unfit habitation. A certified letter was sent out to the property owner allowing 30 days to the lapse to begin the process of bringing the property up to the standards for livability. The property owner did some mitigating work to the yard, but failed to bring any overall improvements to the property itself. A resolution was signed 21-04 to schedule a public hearing on March 15th, 2021. On that day, Mr. Kimpel, being the property owner, revealed that he was going to sign over the property to Mr. Jason Griswold. Mr. Griswold will help bring the property up to date with finances provided by Mr. Kimpel. A recent conversation, Mr. Griswold has revealed that Mr. Kimpel does not intend to pay for the rehabilitation of the property and Mr. Griswold has backed out of the deal, finding it unfavorable. A recent review, the property records show that it has been no transfer of ownership and is still under the ownership of Mr. Kimpel. On April 29th, the coenforcement officer and a Cedric County building inspector did another review of the property to assess the requirements for code compliance from a building perspective. This review led the Cedric County building inspector to say the property was in very poor condition with multiple code violations and clear evidence of illegal construction work. In his estimation, the property would need to be stripped down to its status, perhaps further and rebuilt. On May 3rd, the governing body was updated on the status of the property and expressed the desire to reconsider condemnation. Once again, under analysis, this will be Chapter 4, Article 7 of the failures on this particular property, which also falls under a blinding influence on the Kansas statutes annotated 12-1750D. The governing body in this particular meeting is going to be considering signing a resolution for holding a public hearing. The public hearing will be held on July 6th if it is desired to hold a public hearing, which is the earliest date granted by state law. A resolution will be considered on that date for condemnation. After having the public hearing, if the property does not comply with the condemnation resolution, property can be raised in number of public hearings or notifications to the property owner. And these are some of the pictures that you've seen before. The small costs associated with publication and it's proved as to form. It is recommended the city council sign a resolution to schedule a public hearing to review findings of fact for considering condemnation of a property located at 101 North Cedar Street. Questions?
I guess I'm not real good on my wording. What does raise mean?
Raise means to completely destroy, demolish or otherwise tear down.
Take flush to the ground.
The county presented what he was doing and kind of knew the consequences and where was that. So I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor and Council. It's always good that we give the public an opportunity to make it right. And so I commend you for that. This time it didn't work out. Resolution for series 2021-02, temporary notes for Cloverleaf Farm Phase 2. We issued the, I'm sorry, the issuance of tip notes. It's governed by KSA 12-6A01. The resolution that we're considering tonight is directly a result of what occurred back on April 19th, 2021, when the council authorized the improvement and the issuance for sale for paving and water improvements. The general obligation notes are series 2021-02. And the resolution's authorized an amount not to exceed 760,000 and an interest rate of 2%. And then you authorize staff as well as the clerk and other members, which we have our underwriter Brett Shogren of Stiefel Nichols here this evening to answer any additional questions that you may have. This is a map of the development that is Cloverleaf Farms with the improvement. Now you may remember from the April meeting that the orange dots are where that respread agreement occurred. We have phase two being this darker green and tan being phase three. And what we have here is the red, the paving here going off of the green, which was phase one. And then there'll be a subsequent phase three down the road that's this purple. Now the stormwater and sanitary sewer is already in place for the entire addition. The resolution authorizes and directs the issuance, sale and delivery of $735,000 in aggregate principal amount. Coupon payments will occur to the bond or the note holders, I'm sorry, in October and April, beginning October 1st, 2021 and concluding October 1st, 2024. The total issuance amount is 756,204.75. I kind of just break it all down there in a little more detail for you. In accordance with the approved property owner petition, the improvements will be financed through temp notes and then ultimately through the special assessment process for 20-year bonds going forward. And we'll have a whole separate assessment process that we'll have to do, including notification to the public at that time. Are there any questions over the actual sale of the notes at this time? If not, if you don't have any questions for myself, Matt or Brett, the motion would be to approve the proposed resolution directing the sale, issuance and delivery of 735,000 in aggregate principal amount of general obligation, temporary notes, series 2021-02, and providing for the levying collection of the annual tax if necessary to pay the principal and interest cost on the notes and making certain covenants and agreements to provide... I guess I meant do, I'm sorry for that typo there. The payment and security and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Item H2, amendment to the Trans Systems design agreement for US 54400 Kellogg, restricted crossing U-turn, also known as an R-cut and connector road. The design scope of services with Trans Systems has plans for construction of the eastbound and westbound left turn lane onto Crown Drive or Barber. It includes the full-depth intersection improvements. Essentially, this is outlining the deliverables to that and to state that the amendment agreement, amendment number two, supports the strategic financial endeavor of trying to generate as much property and sales tax within our commercial districts as possible so we get a greater return on our public investment. The proposed, I'm sorry, the connector road portion is included in our 2021 capital improvement program. The city entered into the KDOT agreement for the R-cut back on May 20th, 2019. And in that, the agreement sets forth, which you have a detailed copy of, both the first agreement as well as this amendment in your staff report. And essentially says that they'll pay for the construction an amount not to exceed 2 million. The city's issued a total of 4.3 million in GEO bonds for the Star Bond District. That includes 820,000 for the Crown Drive and Grand Slam Way, as well as the stormwater and water and sewer mains, not the actual service connections from the lots, but the mains there too. And then the series 2021, which was three point, just under 3.5, had 1.5 for infrastructure and another 1.5 going for improvements within the district itself for the amenities being constructed. This is all within the framework as defined by the Kansas Department of Commerce and our development agreement that was approved by the Secretaries of Commerce throughout this. This is showing the potholing, which is one of the included costs as we had additional work that had to occur as a result of that. And that's just showing what they're doing because of the amount of infrastructure, utility, communications, water service, sewer, gas lines, all of that running through there. They have to literally go in by hand to verify where they're at and what service lines are there. To date, we do have the, for the agreement that we spent, we do have the traffic impact study that defined the design requirements and also discuss some of the traffic flow requirements that we'll be discussing in the next agenda item for the 183rd Street project. The proposed amendment agreement number two provides for the KDOT field check designs at a cost of 75,800. At the design of the connector road, KDOT's agreed to apply any of the remaining R-cut funds remaining from the construction to the connector road. So anything on the city's 1.5 that could potentially free that up, depending upon how those costs come in. So we'll also have the Goddard Galleria owner, Mr. John Dugan, extending his internal roadway to the public road portion of the development. And if you look at your staff report, there's a, an image that I included, which is actually page 65 of 120 on your agenda packet. And that kind of shows that area to the right-hand side of the roundabout that's there is where Mr. Dugan will extend his road and connect it. Again, the project's included in the 2021 capital improvement program. The funds have already been issued. And so what we're liking, wanting to do is extend the agreement to a total cost of 225,800. We have Mr. Brett Latauski of Trans Systems, who is our principal here in the office of Wichita, that can answer any of your questions that you have regarding this or the next agenda item as well. If there are no questions, it's recommended that the council authorize the mayor to execute the Trans Systems Amendment Number 2 agreement to the scope of services for the US 54400 and Crown Drive R-cut as presented.
So we got any other expenses on that second Star Bond issue area? As far as infrastructure going over to a stadium?
No, sir, not that we're aware of. Now, we do have an existing culvert that's put in there, but there'll be obviously utility extensions and transportation extensions that the developer's responsible for for that. That'll be on the developer's portion. But nothing from the public at large, from us. Any more questions? Seems pretty straightforward.
Motion.
I would like the motion to execute what's recommended. I've approved a train system.
Approval for a train system.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Item H3, 183rd at US 54400 intersection improvements and pedestrian connection to the R-cut design agreement with Trans Systems. This project or this portion of the project was originally planned to be included with the frontage road that was recently realigned. But because of some of the findings of the R-cut and when the application process pulled it out and the complexity of the signal interactions, that this portion was pulled back and was addressed separately from that initial application that was approved. And I think it's understandable that the complexity here as we start signaling to her. The intent is, is that you should be able, if you're driving the speed limit, to flow seamlessly through the signals with minimal interruption. It doesn't mean that you won't get a sequencing that occurs simply so that the light is on a regular cycle. So you will get a red light, but in, by and large, if you are traveling the speed limit, you should get a green light all the way through both the R-cut and the 183rd intersection with this design. It's to...
Is it on those lights in the access road or 54 or...?
It'll be on US 54. And I do have kind of an outline or an image in a rectangle picture on the bottom of page 79 of 120 on the staff report, which shows kind of a purple area that is the survey work that'll be done. But the blue is the actual road intersection. And then the orange line is kind of the general route of the sidewalk that will connect the frontage road pedestrian traffic to the R-cut so folks can actually get across. This is included in the 2021-2022 capital improvement program. The proposed agreements for the design to be completed there for 183rd and Kellogg, it'll include the construction of a southbound left turn lane, a through lane and a right turn lane. The northbound will include a right turn lane with, and a straight, I'm sorry, so you'll be able to do the same, right, left and forward. The sidewalk would be designed from 183rd to connect to the R-cut on both sides. The improvements will match the recommendations from the November 18th KDOT traffic impact study and tie into the new frontage road alignment, as well as that Harlan and the city recently completed that we previously discussed. And then it'll also coordinate all of the drainage, traffic signal improvements, you know, all the marking and all of that. The design cost is 87,000. We'll have some property acquisition for construction and some space requirements there that are included at 15,400. And then the total cost for design and property acquisition would be 102,450. The project's included in the capital improvement program. And we have approximately 350,000 designed for the preliminary costs for that. And then of course, KDOT would pick up the remaining for construction.
So I'm looking at the picture here.
And this may be a Brett question because I don't...
Can you pull up, do you have the picture on your slides?
No, I don't. Sorry. Is it page 79 there for that?
Yes. So I'm just curious why the sidewalk is not going to follow the frontage road where it connects to 183rd, why it's going all the way south of the bank where the old frontage road was and then goes back up where it meets and then comes back down?
Well, it's going to allow folks to essentially traverse the entire frontage because at some point there may be some sort of crowding. I mean, and again, this is a concept and I'll defer to...
Brian, I might kick in.
Go ahead.
Of course, we have sidewalk all the way down to that southeast part of the bank. And so I guess that was the connection point that we thought we'd go, we'd tie there and go west there and then get over to the original frontage road from that point.
Okay.
Maybe Harlan can answer my question. If you're traveling west, are you going to be able to cross over 54 to get to the...
Ask the R-cut there?
Through the R-cut, yes.
So what is the R-cut? Does it go over or does it go...?
Oh, it's that grade.
Is that great?
Yeah, yeah. And I guess the other thing, I think we're still in discussion about whether the sidewalk goes on the north or the south side of the frontage road. We're actually, it's so tight there on the north side, we're actually, I think, and maybe Brett can allude to this, I think we're actually talking about putting it on the south side so that it's easily, it flows right into tying into the R-cut crossover where that'll be. Because it'll be kind of a diagonal crossover at the R-cut into the median and then on a cross.
So then if it's on the south side, will it just go straight parallel instead of curving back up and doing, just see how it kind of does a little...
It may, it may, yeah. I see, I see what you're talking about.
That would make more sense.
I see what you're talking about, yeah. It very well may.
Okay.
So everything going west is one way and everything going east is one way on the access roads?
No, no, it's still two-way.
When the flyover occurs.
When and if the elevated expressway would occur, I mean, those will be one-way. But for the purposes of the R-cut, the frontage roads will still be two-way. So I think maybe showing you, they have a sketch of the R-cut itself. You can kind of see how we could maybe in a future meeting provide you a picture of that so you can see where the crossover occurs, how the pedestrians get across.
Thank you, Patrick.
But pedestrians cross, they are protected, correct Brett? I mean, it's at a stop condition. The traffic's at a stop condition when they, when the pedestrians can cross over.
Yes, and at the R-cut, if you go to page 77, we can show the R-cut. Yeah, it's in the...
Yeah.
It's in, yeah, page 77, which is the, in the very, in the first agenda item, which included, it's included in the original agreement.
Oh, yeah.
It isn't going to be a game of Frogger then, eh?
No, no.
We have one chicken in our sim. It's a crossing machine.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've done it without this line.
You know alligators?
Right.
There's no floating longs that you have.
That was a fun game. Not in real life.
What are you old people talking about?
Frogger.
No.
Yeah.
Never heard of it.
It was about the time of Galaga, but you probably don't remember.
I was talking about freeway, but you know.
But right after missile command. Are there any questions regarding the agreement for this design?
I do have a question, probably not a very popular question, but there's a lot of truck drivers that seem to blow these red lights through Goddard. Is there anything to mitigate that other than don't run a red light?
Enforcement's probably the strongest thing you can do. As Brian mentioned, we're going to coordinate the signals at 199 R-cut to 183rd. So as you're going eastbound or westbound, you should be able to hit all three of those. There is a refuge island in the middle of the R-cut for pedestrians when they cross.
Right. But, I mean, somebody should be able to hear a tractor trailer coming, but, I mean, I almost got killed at 183rd one morning. I mean, this guy just...
Oh, I can hear their horns when they blow the lights all the time at my house.
He was just hammering it, he didn't even hit him.
Yeah.
He just, he would've taken me out.
I hear enough horns that it's, I mean, at that point, I guess, do we consider getting the cameras that are going to take pictures and we just mail them tickets?
We're not allowed to do that in Kansas.
Well, that's fine.
But, you know, that's, that's the whole point of the integrated traffic controls to minimize that potential. And then also, as this occurs, you know, we're always looking to try and reduce the speed through here, but obviously, state traffic engineers have a different, their purpose for the highways are different than our purpose for the highways.
Right.
Our purpose is to create place and sense of being and belonging where their purpose is to move people as expeditiously and as unimpeded as possible from point A to point B.
Yeah.
So those conflict.
Well, I know it's not, it's traffic engineer's fault, you know.
Well, it's not his fault. We can blame KDOT, but they're giving us a lot of money for construction, so I don't...
No, I know, I know it's an unpopular, but I'm just, I'm just curious, are there like, you know, cylinders that can pop up and, you know?
It's true.
No, that'd be a huge liability.
We can't take their picture, you think we could throw them?
I still think the rule of looking both ways before you cross is still going to fall.
Well, that's honestly, I count to three.
I look a couple times.
And then I drive across.
I seriously wait until everybody stops.
Yeah, you'd admit that on that other guy though.
Yeah.
Anyways, no, I was just kind of curious, like, you know, if there's any, I mean, Darwin awards to kind of my support.
You know, conversation with the police chief, if they can, if there's a certain time that this is happening more frequently than others, if they could be out trolling at that time.
Yeah.
That word of mouth gets through the truckers, they talk.
Yeah.
We can also look at, you know, having, anyway, yeah, we got, we got things we can look at as far as enforcement.
I'm just asking a question.
That would require a paradigm shift operationally.
I mean, you usually see a tractor trailer coming.
Well, if there are no further questions, the staff recommendations to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for the 183rd US 54400 improvements plus pedestrian arc connection to R cut with trans systems.
So motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, H4 is for water well number seven replacement. Little background, in early January of 21, water well seven developed an undiagnosed issue, placed a drag on the pump motor, causing it to overload and shut down nearly immediately upon startup. If you remember, at the January 29th council meeting, council authorized $40,000 to hire Clark Well and Equipment to dismantle and repair damage to the well's pumping equipment and get it operational again. Upon disassembly and inspection, Clark Well found that the hole had developed a, the screen had developed a hole in the well about 72 feet into the casing and that caused gravel to go into the well casing and seize up the pump and column. The extent of damage to the well casing components will require more than just a basic rebuild of the column and the pump components to make the well operational again. This well has been operational for all, inoperable for all of 2021 and we need to get it back running again. Making it operational will require repairing or covering, basically covering the hole in the screen, replacing the column, the pump motor and the pump itself. The screen will be repaired by removing the existing pitless adapter and installing a 10-inch liner into the existing well casing. To install the liner, the existing building over the well and the concrete pad around the well opening must be removed and replaced. Once the liner is replaced, a new column and a minimum 400 gallon per minute submersible pump will be installed. Additional work outside of Clark Well's portion of this is connecting the discharge piping and electrical work to provide power to the well. It's kind of difficult to see here, but this is an illustration of the well hole itself with the casing. Right here, we have a 10-foot screen from 68, from 68 feet, I believe, 65 feet to 82 feet. Can't see very well. 66 feet to 82 feet. And then we have another 30-foot screen from 97 feet on down. The hole is at 72 feet, so it's right in this area of that hot pot screen. What Clark Well's proposing do, they will remove this pitless unit at the top here and they will put a new liner down into this portion of the well that'll go down to 82 feet. We'll lose that 10 feet of screen, but we have added the screen down there for the water to flow in to pump out. Once they do that, they'll install a new submersible pump and motor that will go down the bottom and obviously pump the water out of here and we can make it operational again. The financials of this, kind of, to put it all together, at the January 19th, 2021 meeting, council approved $40,000 to pull and inspect the well and diagnose the problems and make repairs. Of that $40,000 approval, we have spent $7,525. That's what it had cost them to pull the column, diagnose the issue, pull the sand out of the well and camera the well to find the, the hole. So that leaves an additional 32,475 from that original approval. I'm requesting an additional $60,000 for a total approval of 100,000. We're looking at cost, total cost being 92,475. That includes the 75,000 or 7500 correction on that, of that, anyway. I'm out of, I'm out of, I'm out of sorts here a little bit. It's cost $80,000 to case the well, to put the new, to move, remove the existing infrastructure, that is the concrete pad, the 10-inch adapter and the wellhouse. That, they will align and install a 10 and a half, 10 and 0.75 inch steel liner from the surface to 82 feet below. That will produce a submersible pump, a 60 horsepower motor. They will tie in the discharge line and then install the, and connect the controls of the submersible pump. And they replace the concrete around the end. That's $80,000 for that, plus the 75. It'll cost about $6,000 to replace the wellhouse for a total cost of 86,000. And that leaves us a contingency, this is incorrect, that leaves us a contingency of, this is incorrect, that leaves us a contingency of 64,75, I'm sorry. That's including, so the cost is a little bit over 86, it's 92,475. That's the 80 plus the 6 plus the 75, 25. My apology on getting that out of sorts.
Which budget does this come out of?
This budget, I'll show that here in a second. So actually, I'm asking for 100,000. We're anticipating 92,475 for cost with 64,475 for contingency. Sorry about the confusion there, I got myself out of whack.
The pump is everywhere now, is it some type of group pump or something?
It's not a submersible pump, the motor is on top. Harlan, can you explain?
It's called a turbine, turbine pump, it has, it has the cups at the bottom and it spins, the motor's up top and it spins and pulls the water up the column pipe, whereas this, the pump is actually down at the bottom, submersible.
And the, and the motor and the pump itself, we have the bottom, will push it up. The plus of that is we get a new motor, obviously we have to have a new pump. It's, it's smaller, it'll fit down in the case well, in the relined well casing, but then the motor that we currently have.
Keeps the gravel from coming in that screen.
Well, that's what, that's what, when they put the liner in, right here, it will go from this portion, the bottom of the screen, all the way to the top. And this, the hole is right about here, 72 feet. So the liner will.
So the bottom screen is more out?
The bottom screen looks great. We have a video, they did send a video camera down. The liner and casing in this well, the liner in this well looks really good actually, except for the, for the hole where the screen is. The other screens are very clean. A gentleman from Groundwater Associates, he's a geologist and he's very knowledgeable in wells, he looked at the video with us. He was very impressed at how everything looked, except for obviously we had that small hole right there. And when that hole made, it all filled up the gravel, got caught in the pump, locked it up, locked the shaft up, going up to the motor and as soon as we would fire that thing, it would put a load on that motor and it would overload and shut down.
And you guys are going to purchase a 400 gallon per minute pump?
Correct.
Would it be a good idea to purchase a larger pump?
Well, we're going to purchase just as large a one as we can, but we're limited by the 10-inch size. We're going to, if we can get bigger than, if some, a larger pump is made, yes.
Yeah, the minimum we'll go is 400 gallons per minute. Okay. So let me revisit this real quick, I got myself out of whack, and so let me make it more clear. We had the original $40,000 that was approved, we've spent 7,500 leaving 32,475. We're asking for another 60,000 for a total of 100,000. Costs will be 92,475, that includes that 75, 7,500, that 80, and the 6,000 to replace the building. That leaves us a 6,475 dollar contingency. So this 86,000 here is incorrect, it should be 92,475 down there, so my apology on that. The funding, the additional 60,000 will come from the same fund that the original 40 came from, from which is 82,830, 82,400. Water reserve collection and treatment, I believe it's also, Wells is the 82,400. That fund currently has a balance of 292,928,32. Questions?
I said you're going to rebuild all this everything, how much of a new well across the upside?
Well, there's a lot of problems with drilling a new well right beside it. One, we talked to KDHE and you've got to have a 100-foot easement around that well with nothing in it. When I say nothing, if there is a shed from an adjacent property with a corner going into that 100-foot easement, they'll say no. If someone parks a boat in their yard within that 100-foot easement, they will say no because it could potentially have something that could leak into the groundwater. So drilling a new well is not only difficult from the permitting side, but it's probably about twice as expensive as this. The initial cost for drilling a new well from them was 142,000 and that was a very base estimate. And so what we're doing here is we're going to get this one up and running, which we need to because right now we also again have well four down, which is something I'll bring to council in the future. Similar situation, they're still diagnosing it. But we've been operating on two wells for about the last month and it's getting to the hot season and so the whole goal with this, after talking to the geologists with Groundwater Associates and Harlan, was to skip the multi-month permitting process and the twice or maybe three times expensive cost to drill a new well and to get this operational. And as Harlan said, we're going a minimum 400 gallon per minute. Our goal is biggest pump we can get in there so we can run it, you know, as much water out of that as we can.
How soon can they get it done?
I talked to Brent today and he called me, actually they're, they're ready to get, they have actually, they've done a lot of work for us and they're ready to work when we're ready to get it started.
And is this the well with the chlorinator on it?
No, that is down the, that is down the road from the wellhouses. We got the four wells and then they pump into the transmission line and then they go about three miles and that's where the chlorine building is. When we do go with the, in the submersible pump in this, we will take the existing motor of well eight that is still good and we will use it as a spare in case a motor should go down one of our other wells and that, I mean, if a motor should die, that saves us about 10 or 15,000. We needed a new motor, so it actually gives us a spare part as well.
Maybe Harlan can ask this, is that screen, does that get blown out from lightning or what makes that?
No, what it is, is the column pipe in which is, in which transmits the water to the surface, it, it develops a hole from corrosion or typically corrosion and so it, it develops a jet of water through that column pipe and unfortunately it goes out and hits the screen and just eats the screen away. So we've talked about maybe trying to figure a way that we can monitor those column pipes to make sure, you know, we TV the wells periodically, you know, when we have a problem, but maybe, maybe we need to do that more frequently so we can proactively try to, try to intercept when that occurs so that it doesn't get so bad that it, it tears up the screen.
The only concern with that, and Harlan and I discussed this, is we don't know if there's a way to camera these without pulling the column, which gets crazy.
Right, right. You have to pull the column pipe, the pump out, everything, then run the, run the camera down, so it's, it's something that we're talking about, see if we can figure out a way. The other thing I wanted to say, Brad with Groundwater Associates, he looked at it and looked, looked at the video and everything and he believed that, that this well is a candidate for repair.
He does.
He said, he said he didn't see the need, even though KDHE's got such a high standard now, he, he thought this was, the well could be repaired, so.
And he recommended repairing this well over drilling, maybe he thinks we can still get the production, it's going to happen cheaper, faster.
Quicker turnaround.
Much quicker turnaround.
It'd probably take three months to get a new well permitted, at least.
It's getting interesting out there, after the Flint, Michigan debacle with lead, you cannot put steel pipe in well casings now. That's your stainless steel or he's had a plastic pipe, which is kind of an interesting situation as well.
So you need a motion to go fix the well?
If there are no additional questions, as recommended, the council authorized staff to approve the repair of water well number seven in the amount of 60,000. Now remember, this is in addition to the 40,000 that was approved on January 19th, 2021.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. Out of H5, water ordinance.
Just need to round the pause before he even starts.
Okay, so again, with both of these water and sewer ordinances, all we are doing is changing the debt service fee, we're not changing any of the rates as there already are, with the exception of that debt service rate and the, so it'll be a flat fee drop across the board. Water storage tank, the water supply line are the two items that we're, that debt service fee repays the debt payments on. Total annual obligation is 247,900. When you break that down by 1,900 customers, annual debt service is 1088 per month per customer. Current debt service rate is 1244. So the actual amount we're refinancing, the actual amount we're paying for water debt is not actually changed, but the growth in our customer base allows us to drop this by $1.56 per month or 1,872 per month per year for each customer. This is just the water side, this is a smaller amount. There'll be a small publication fee for publishing the ordinance and it's approved. So before you adopt, we need to probably do a waive the reading motion as well.
Okay. Throw the motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Brent. Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And on the sewer side, our, the debt we're repaying is the structure cost of the wastewater treatment facility. Due to the refinanced current annual debt obligation for that is 340,000. Currently it's 500,000 or the current, before it was refinanced, the debt service payment was 500,000. Based on an average of 1,830 wastewater customers, annual debt service is 1549 per month. The current, what we currently charge is 2795. The change with the new ordinance would save each customer 12 dollars 46 cents per month or 149.52 per year. And I want to point out that the sample ordinance that was out in the packet was, had the base rate from an old, an old adoption and the current annual base rate, which we are not changing, remains 3137 a month for each sewer customer. What this, but both these new ordinances combined will do is take the current minimum water, combined water and sewer bill for a residential customer within city limits based on 2,000 gallons of usage per month. That bill goes from $80.26 per month down to $66.23 per month.
Awesome.
So we need to waive the reading for the wastewater ordinance.
Motion to waive the reading.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. And now the adoption.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Out of H7, call for second public hearing for Starbond project plan amendment.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we conducted a public hearing on Monday, December 21st, 2020 to consider the addition of a minor project enhancement to the April 21st, 2014 adopted project plan. The December 21st, 2020 hearing was held with no public comment received. The public hearing called for the notice of public hearing to be published in the December 10th, 2020 and December 17th, 2020 additions of the Time Sentinel. Numerous articles provided the Starbond project updates and the December 11th addition referenced the 21st public hearing and the notice of publications for the December 10th and 17th publication dates at city staff, however, we can only verify the December 11th notice. So even though there was that second reference, we would still like to, in the spirit of the law and out of an abundance of caution, recommend conducting a second public hearing with two verified publications of the notice of public hearing that would occur on May, the publications would occur on the May 20th and May 27th edition with a May 27th public hearing at 12 o'clock noon and the action does not delay the issuance of phase two funding. at 12 o'clock noon, and the action does not delay the issuance of Phase Two funding, which is anticipated to close on June 21, 2021.
So is there any action?
There's a small publication fee, and it would be recommended for the motion to be to set a public hearing for the consideration of amendment to the Starbonne District Development Plan, setting the hearing for Thursday, May 27, 2021, at 12:00 PM noon in the City Council chambers.
Good for your motion. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Motion down.
City administrators report, honorable mayor and council. Just some views from Thatcher's drone footage. You can see the aquatic center here and the water park on the upper side of the photo. The most notable is construction of the first floor hotel with the health club here, and you can kind of see the, which we'll see in the next slide, the view of the childcare center. And this is, of course, looking back straight west.
Is there ever been any aquatic here? Any construction?
Yeah, and the concrete slabs are poured and, and they're doing their thing. Arbor Creek, this is the May 13 image, and just shows the new homes, looking back to the northwest there, where you can see Amelia Earhart and 23rd Street. Just, this is the roundabout looking south, southwest, or south, southeast, sorry. There's 38 to 59 sold. One thing that I do want to point out is that we do anticipate Phase Two coming forth here rather soon, and there'll also be some additional respread agreements down the pipe as well, and that's identical or very similar to what's happened at St. Andrews and Cloverleaf. Speaking of Cloverleaf, this is looking back to the north with Phase Two, and you can see this looking back to the northeast. Just showing you kind of the, the phase map that you saw earlier with Phase One essentially being constructed and completed. Elk Ridge, just some home development there, nothing really new from, no new housing start since the last report. So they do continue to grow. Rustic Creeks probably seeing the most noticeable as the sewers in, and we anticipate construction beginning here shortly. I know the city engineer, Harlan Forker, and our public works director, Brooke Brandon Burke, had the pre-construction conference with contractors Thursday last week. Footage of the Galleria, where you can see the access road into the parking lot, and then looking back toward the Walmart, and then, as you know, the Brahms is more of a traditional hard ice cream, and then there a soft serve competitive, competitor you can kind of see in the background there. So it's kind of, you got your choice of apple or oranges, so to speak, for ice cream here. View of the playground, you can see the new park benches that have been installed, and would like to thank Public Works for their, their work on that, so thank you, Brooke. We had our first community center focus group. Due to the turnout, we've just kind of consolidated, consolidated everything to six to eight, just because there's, so a few turnout. So we'll have the next one on May 27. Anticipating a council presentation on August 2.
Are, are we getting enough feedback for that?
I believe, and I'll defer to Thatcher, but I do believe that the, they, at least that first initial focus group was, was fruitful. So, and, and we do anticipate having some wider, more public at-large opportunities for discussion.
Okay. I think they had a productive conversation. I think down the road, opening it up to more of the public would be.
Beneficial.
Beneficial, too.
Good.
But the architects seem to think it went well.
And again, what we did start at, at that meeting, kind of reviewing the process, our, our bond capacity, what we currently know we have, how much would potentially be remaining. So to set the tone, to say, look, what we're doing now is simply creating that vision so that five to 10 years from now, we can begin the process to, to construct the community center that, that the community would like based upon our financial constraints that we might have at that point in time. Upcoming notable agenda items, we're, we're in the swing of budget season, so we'll have workshops in June, and then we'll have a chief's retirement ceremony before the council meeting on June 21, with his last day being the first week in July. Are there any questions over the report? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, Larry, you have anything?
Oh, I guess the only concern I have is with the high cost of construction. Is it, is it relevant? Do you think, Larry?
It, it's always something that, that we're watching for, but also with the petitions and the issuance amounts, and, and that's why, as you know, in Harlan's good at that, is we try and be liberal in our cost estimates and conservative in our revenue generation, so that way we're, we're not coming up short. But that's obviously a factor that is always at play, that I don't think that strategically it's going for us at this point, but I'll, I'll defer to, you know, the city engineer and public works director, who deal with the contractors directly on a day-to-day basis.
I just didn't know, didn't know, quickly on the Western streets, well, all of a sudden, high cost of materials over the building.
Kind of like, I mean, the developers were surprised that, for instance, Cloverleaf and Arbor Creek, they already moved through those lots, allotted for Phase One in one year. And so maybe on a custom home where people are, you know, given a price, and then that builder has to either stick to that price or postpone it, but I don't know, it doesn't seem to be stopping the builders at this point, it's just a pass-through. They're passing it on to the customers, and the customers are still, seem to still be paying it, so.
A lot of what I've been told is that even the builders aren't, even on like custom homes, they're saying, we're not giving you a price, even if we start, you're, you're going to pay whatever the final cost is, so. And interest rates are so low, they're still going pretty good, so.
Is that all you had, Larry? Sarah?
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything. Michael?
Those are some nice benches, I appreciate them, sit down.
It is nice having them, isn't it?
Thank you.
We've got an additional bench, we're coming in, we doubled up on the west side of the, of the new playground, and we got a poor new pad, we had some chicanery, and someone wrote some words into it, so we're going to cut that out and have it replaced. Maybe this week, if the rain holds off, we'll have it replaced this week, and get the new bench in and we'll get it installed.
Good.
Thank you.
Brett?
So how good were those words?
Say again.
Would that happen?
What did it say? What was the chicanery? Someone wrote their name plus another name, and then handed the stick to their child, let their child write their name, and got it all on camera, and the next night, they showed back up and God, her PWD went over there and asked them about it, and he said, yes, I did write it. So they summoned him, and that's that. We've got cameras all over, you can't get away with watching out there.
He's talking about Darwin Award.
We got a really nice throttle shot of it.
Darwin Award.
A gentleman in his voice writing in fresh concrete, teaching children to do it, it was, I was disappointed.
When the opportunity arises.
We, we, we installed all the cameras for the safety of the playground and the children play, so that, you know, God forbid, anything ever happened, we would have footage on it. We never expected to see vandalism, you know, apparent.
A grown adult.
6:30 in the evening, broad daylight. First day of, obviously, the.
Is that all you had, Brent?
That's it.
Well, I don't have anything. Hopefully, the incident that PD is dealing with, they're, they're getting along okay. Let's pray for them, pray for the boy and their family, so that's all I have to say, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. adjourned. Okay.